I know for a fact, like, my son has walked downtown a couple times. He's been accosted by people, you know, asking for money. And they're very aggressive about it. And, you know, I guess he didn't know what to say, so they were very aggressive with him. You know, but he's, you know, he's 6'1", he can handle himself, but, you know, a lot of people can't. But I've gotten a lot of -- people have, you know, brought it to my attention. I think it's because I live near the downtown area. My office is near the downtown area, so I'm down there a lot. And I also know Attorney Ronconi, I know you know Jay, and other people walk their dog in Carter Park, and they have been accosted, you know, walking their dog, just, you know...
By panhandlers?
Yeah.
So...
By people that basically are, you know, I mean, it's their right to hang out there, that's fine, but it's not their right to accost other people who are trying to use the park. So I just wanted to bring you down to see, you know, what your thoughts were, and, you know, if there's any way of maybe increasing our presence down...
Well, I can, I guess I can talk about it a little bit, and maybe the three attorneys would correct me on this, but I'm pretty sure that the Supreme Court is continuously saying that panhandling, including aggressive panhandling, is a First Amendment right. We routinely bombarded by requests to get rid of, for instance, the panhandles on the traffic islands and things like that, and it can't be done. The Supreme Court has clearly said that that's a protected right. Aggressive panhandling is protected as a First Amendment right, and it only becomes a crime if they're in actuality violating a law, disorderly conduct, accosting or annoying a member of the opposite sex, disturbing the peace, something like that. Otherwise, they're doing what they're allowed to do. It's uncomfortable for people. We encourage them to call us if it happens, so we can identify them. We have a really good handle on the homeless and the panhandlers. Literally, this is my book, it's, I think it's four pages long, I mean, I can't share it with you because there's protected, you know, privacy stuff in there, but we have about 47 homeless in the city right now, which is double what we had last year. We manage them, we know every single one of them, we know what they're doing, why they're doing it for the most part. But our operating procedure for aggressive panhandlers is to get them trespassed if they're on private property. When it's in a public space, it becomes a little more problematic. What we did for part of the summer was undercover patrols in Carter Park, in downtown, plainclothes police officers. It really was not that effective, because, again, we have a pretty good handle on them. So I don't, I don't know if I'm going to be able to answer you to your satisfaction. I can't, I can't sweep them up in a sweep and take them out of Lemonster, but we do encourage people to call us. If you feel that it was aggressive, they got in your way, they impeded your right to go where you were going, then call us, and we'll go down there. We know who these people are, sometimes even just a description of them, and we'll know automatically which one of our people it is, which one of the homeless people. We are fairly aggressive with charging for any crime that we can charge for. So we've charged them with disorderly, disturbing the peace, open containers, the big one. And the policy on the police department is, and you have to understand that most of these people are either mentally ill, or the vast majority of the ones in Lemonster are substance abusers, either alcohol or opioids. The policy on the police department is that if you get them under the influence, and it's second, third, fourth time, then we Section 35 them. And we've been pretty successful with that, to try and get them treatment. Some of our more hardcore people, as a matter of fact, the two hardest core ones we had a couple of years ago, there were every business in downtown Lemonster, highly, highly aggressive. We ended up Section 35-ing both of them, and they're both clean and sober right now. And we haven't seen, that was the male and female duo that was going around town. They're gone. That's what we do, monitor them, try and manage them. If they commit a crime, charge them. If they're addicted to something, Section 35 them, and try and get them clean and sober.
Is there any way to increase the presence in Carter Park? Or maybe even have signs put up that, you know, "Call the police if you're being, you know, accosted," or whatever?
Well, I guess we could look into doing that. I'm a fan of, but again, like everything else, it costs money. I'm a fan of the call boxes. I don't know if you've seen the call boxes at all the fire stations. I'm a fan of those. The call boxes are an easy way to get directly to the police department, and those call boxes can mount a camera. I'm a big fan of cameras. I don't know if you all know that we have six cameras downtown now, and there's a program to expand those. And the next place that they're going to go, when I come up with some money, is Carter Park. When we put the cameras up, the homeless leave immediately. They're gone, they don't want to be on camera. So there's going to be some cameras going up in Carter Park. It depends on whether I can get the $8,000 that the department needs to put the two cameras up there. But I certainly can look into signage, I can...
It's a relatively new problem in the city, you know, it being this aggressive, I guess.
Well, we've had aggressive panhandlers for years, but maybe the, again, because the volume of them is coming up, that it's more prevalent now. But I certainly can look into some more strategies, particularly for Carter Park. I think once I can get some cameras up there, they're going to disappear. And, you know, I mean, sad to say, but part of the issue with the homeless is just displacement and continuing to displace.
Oh, I understand that, yeah.
And just so everybody knows too, if you see a homeless person or a panhandler out there, they spoke it to a police officer, absolutely guaranteed. I have an aggressive walking beat. We have two dedicated walking beats. The afternoon shift at 3:00 begins to walk. We occasionally put undercover, we occasionally spend some overtime. Very, very soon, once my ATVs are repaired, we're going to be checking every trail in the city of Lemonster to make sure that there's no other camps someplace hidden where we don't know about them, to make sure they're cleaned up before the winter comes. So we have a lot of strategies for dealing with them, but we'll come up with something for Carter Park. I think the cameras are number one, so you might see an appropriation request from me soon.
No, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, I've already got the quote, and I'm good to go. I just have to talk to the mayor about whether, you know, he's behind spending some more money on the cameras.
Okay. I just, yeah, if you could just give me a status, give us a status, that'd be great.
Yep.
I don't know if anyone else has any questions or comments.
Counselor Frida, did you want to discuss the constable before I gave everybody else the opportunity to discuss? Okay, we give each counselor a chance to ask the Officer Goldman's, Chief Goldman's some questions. Counselor David Cormier?
I'm all set for the moment, thank you.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Who wants to?
Counselor Arndtjer?
I have a couple of questions, Chief. You had mentioned that the homeless population doubled in the last year, and you said that it seems to be on a constant rise. Is there any particular reason that Lemonster's having this, or is this countrywide, or, you know?
Well, it's countrywide. I don't know if you've read some of the stuff about Los Angeles and everything like that.
Oh, yeah.
Los Angeles homeless population is dramatically increasing, and we all know about San Francisco, and that's about to be buried. There's a few reasons, without casting any dispersion on Fitchburg, their cleanup of their camps along the Nashua, those people had no place else to go, and they came to Lemonster.
So they forced them down here.
Yeah, they came to Lemonster. We have talked to the panhandlers, and they tell us the people in Lemonster are very generous. And that's another reason they come to Lemonster. And that's why you've seen, you know, you've seen the signs we've had up for a couple of years, "Don't give to the panhandlers, contribute to charities instead," because, you know, when you give them money, it's just going in their arm for the most part. And the other reason is we have social service agencies in Lemonster. So when you come here for a social service agency, you tend to hang around. And, you know, we are a beautiful city, and the downtown and Carter Park are beautiful, and they like to hang around in the beautiful areas, just like anybody else likes to.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Bedanza?
I'm all set, thanks.
Counselor Schalfo-Zephyr?
Yeah, thank you very much. Thanks, Chief, for coming down.
Sure.
The call boxes that have cameras, do they have an alarm? So if you pull it, is there an immediate loud alarm?
No, not that I'm aware of it. And that was a fire department initiative, but it goes, there is a phone at the police station, and it's a direct call to the police. It almost harkens back to the old days. It's a direct call back to the police station. They install new phones, so, you know, my dispatches have like three phones each now.
I would think that an alarm would really, you know, make the person or the perpetrator, whatever, disperse immediately. I mean, so I don't know if they make them with that option.
I'd have to look into that, but it's not, it's just not solely for like, "Oh, my God" situations. I mean, it's, you know, for normal run-of-the-mill stuff, too. So I don't know if we don't want an alarm going off all the time, but again, I was at the presentation, but I don't know if that question was asked, so I can look into that, too. But I am a fan of those call boxes. I think, you know, when we talked about the rail trail a few weeks ago, I mentioned them too, because you can put a mast on them and put a 360 degree camera on them, and, you know, it's all about multiplying your eyes, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah. I think the change in behavior that I've seen, or have heard about is, panhandling is kind of a passive thing, you know, somebody's standing on a corner in front of the post office or at some traffic light. But more recently, I think there have been instances where people actually have approached individually in parking lots, and I think that that's a different...
Again, that's been going on, that's been going on for several years, or multiple years, and, you know, unfortunately, I've become way more knowledgeable on this stuff than I ever thought I'd have to be. But it is clearly, clearly, clearly protected as a First Amendment right, and it's, until they impede your ability to travel, like on the sidewalk, or to get into a store, or it's private property, it's not a crime. But I'll reiterate, we encourage anybody that happens to to call us, or shoot us an email, or something like that, so we can track it, and we do know who these people are.
Store parking lots, that's considered private property, is that right?
What's that?
A store parking lot, for example, a...
If the, oh, for sure, if, as long as they, as long as, and most of them are privately owned, absolutely. And when I tell you that we have hundreds and hundreds of trespass notices on our computer at the station, there are some people, I heard it today on my way home, "Has he been trespassed?" One of our hardcore guys, "Has he been trespassed from this location yet?" And he wasn't, and he's going to be, and that's going to basically take care of the downtown area for this one particular individual. The other thing I'd like to say, too, is Judge Noonan's been awesome with this over in Lemonster District Court. We locked them up for something, and he will, himself, as a condition of their release, ban them from the square, ban them from Carter Park, and that has really been very successful for us, too.
It's really helped tremendously, and I do just want to give a shout out to the walking beat officers, because they've been tremendous. They've been a huge, huge help, and they're a real positive sight in the neighborhood when they're walking up and down Mechanic Street, so thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. That's been working out good.
Okay. All set?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Frida.
Do we have many, maybe you said it, if you did, I apologize, because I was looking something up. Do we have any homeless camps? I know it was brought up along the way when we were talking about the rail trail.
We do, we do have some. I'm not aware that we have any that are terribly active right now. If they're on private property, we speak to the private property owners, have them posted "No trespassing" and "Dismantled." If they're on public property, a little bit different than what Fitchburg does, we will decide whether they are a health issue or not. You know, the homeless are people, too, and we don't want to get into a position where we're, you know, doing anything cruel, so we're very careful about that. There was one back behind Barnes &amp; Noble, and I guess the remnants are still there, so we're monitoring that one. But the one that was on quasi-private slash public property was clearly a public health hazard, because there's retaining ponds and stuff like that, and we dismantled that, most of that, last year. So, yeah, and that's another reason the ATVs are going out soon, so we can find any that we may have missed. I mean, the one that, you know, the one on Water Street where we ended up having the armed robbery, and they were using beer bottles, we knew nothing about that. It was behind 97 Water Street and was on private property. We didn't know anything about that. So we're trying to get into some of these more rural areas to see what's going on.
Just a last question. A few years back, we were trying to deal with the issue of people trying to collect money from cars going by, they were in the middle of the road with signs, they were downtown, they were on Route 12, Route 13, and I know there was an active actions taken to try to eliminate that, and I think there was a court, if I'm not mistaken, this would be the same principle, the court action said that they had the right to free speech, as long as they weren't impeding any of the traffic.
That one I don't know about, to be honest with you. I know that there's a licensing procedure in Lemonster, and they have to get a license from me, a permit from me to do that, and we have conditions on doing it, and some of the biggest ones that we put in were age, and highway transportation safety, bright vests, and if they don't do that, my guys have been told to shut them down and revoke their permit. We try and monitor, I don't think we have anywhere near what we used to.
We haven't had that issue for some time now, but...
Yeah, we have a few...
Few years back, they were like on all the public streets, and...
Yeah, we still have a few...
It wasn't for a fund, it was for them, you know, trying to get money for themselves.
Are you talking about the panhandlers?
Yes.
Oh, no, 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 yeah, I did discuss that at the beginning. That's protected.
Yeah.
Yeah, if they're in the public way itself, that's a problem, but if they're on a traffic island or something like that, I ended up in a debate with this guy like two years ago, and I had to send him the Supreme Court ruling, or the appeals court ruling on it. They're trying, standing on a traffic island with a sign that says, "I'm homeless, I'm a, you know, I'm a down-and-out vet, give me money, I cannot move them along."
Right.
There are some, Gloucester was one of the towns that tried it. They make, they put these things down on the islands, the angled blocks and the triangle blocks and something like that, and I'll tell you, they took a really major black eye for that. So, you know, we haven't gotten there yet. I know that, you know, we thought about it, but that seems to quiet it down.
Yeah.
But again, the population of Lemonster's generous, so if you build it, they will come.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else? Any questions for the chief? Okay, all right.
All right, thanks. Take care.
Thank you, Chief. We appreciate you coming.
Sure. Of course, of course.
We will now have the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on a matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address, along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering to questions, however, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. We don't have anybody signed up for the public forum. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the council? For a second time, anybody in the audience who would like to address the council on any matter? Third and final time, anybody in the council, anybody in the council chambers like to address the council? Okay, seeing none, I would call the public forum closed. We have a 6:50 interview. Joanne Donfro? This will be referred to the Clerk of Ways and Means.
Have a seat right there, Joanne. Yeah, any seat will do. Turn on your mic, just depress the button, and just tap it, see if it... Just give it a tap, it should... The mic itself, see if... Try the button again.
You're a real gentleman, Counsel, you get up and help with it.
Hello, I got it.
Okay. Hi, Joanne.
Hello, how are you?
Thank you for coming down.
Nice to see you.
Although many of us know you and know what your contributions have been to the community, this is more an opportunity for the public to know who's serving on their boards and their commissions, so if you wanted to give us a little background, it would be great. Let you go with that.
Okay. For those that you don't know me, my name's Joanne Donfro, and I grew up in Lemonster and on Helena Street, and I still live there. My parents were both residents, lifelong residents of Lemonster. My father was a physician throughout his career for Lemonster Hospital, and my mom served on the school committee. After I went to the public schools, I, in college, I married Paul Donfro, who is also a lifelong Lemonster resident, as are his parents. So we raised our children here, they went through the public schools, so there's a strong bond, which many of you here have. And we have already been, like you said, involved through either our children, our work. I worked at Health Alliance as a physical therapist for 35 years, or 20 years, but in town, as a physical therapist for 35 years. My husband was an attorney in Worcester, but he worked on the Health Alliance Board of Trustees for many years. Sadly, about a year ago, just over a year ago, he passed from a rare form of cancer, so it's, we've had like a lull, getting used to my new normal, and when Jim asked me would I consider serving on the board, I thought, this might be a good way to get back into the community and start giving back to the community that had provided so much for my family and me. So that's just, I don't know a lot about it, but I'm eager to learn and contribute any way that I can.
That's an excellent introduction, and we appreciate that. By your resume, I'd love to see you on the Board of Health as well. Maybe that'll be the next step, Joanne. I don't have any questions. I mean, I'm totally supportive here, but I'll... Counselor Dabrowski is on Ways and Means as well?
Yeah, I don't have any questions, just happy that you're able to serve.
Thank you.
Any other counselors have questions? Counselor Bedanza?
Yeah, I just, I just want to say that I've known Joanne for about 55 years, I'm afraid to admit.
We went to school together from elementary.
Yeah, and, you know, has, she's actually in many ways being modest about her accomplishments and contributions, and I also want to say, I really particularly like the idea of her being involved with the library. I know her mother was involved in education, the community, and I think it's really following suit, and a really strong, wonderful tradition, and be pleased to support you tonight.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Counselor Schalfo-Zephyr?
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you, Joey, for coming down. We've known each other for a very long time, and Counselor Bedanza and I, we both serve on the trustees, we're both trustees of the library, along with Mr. Despo behind you. So we're very happy that you're joining us, you know...
Oh, thank you, I appreciate it.
Another hardworking, smart community member that will help us keep the library on track.
That's right. And it's great that it's so vibrant in this world of technology, and it's still vibrant and active, and that's such a wonderful thing.
It is, it really is, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other counselors have any questions or comments? Counselor Bedanza mentioned your mother. I served with her for many years on the school committee.
Yeah.
She was a great lady as well, so...
Yes, she was.
You have such a long history of contribution, it's great. Great to see you come aboard, and...
Thank you.
Our recommendations certainly will move forward, we'll bring it to the, if the acting president has no problem, we'll bring it to the top of the agenda, so you don't have to sit around and wait for the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Going to be helpful.
Do I stay here or go back?
All right. Thanks, Joanne.
Thank you, won't be long. We don't have a lot before matters, so... All right.
Our recommendations certainly will move forward. We'll bring it to the, if the acting president has no problem, we'll bring it to the top of the agenda, so you don't have to sit around and wait for the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
It'll be helpful.
Do I stay here or go back?
All right. Thanks, Joanne.
Thank you. Won't be long. You don't have a lot before matters, so. Cool. All right. (music)
Officially commence with the regular meeting of the City Council. Please join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will start with the roll call of the Honorable Counselors in attendance, starting with Council David Cormier.
Present.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Councilor Thomas Arndinger.
Present.
Councilor Mark Badanza.
Present.
Council Susan Schala Fazepa.
Present.
Council John Dabrowski.
Present.
Councilor Claire Frida.
Present.
And I will be logged in as present, so all eight, the eight councilors in attendance. The Vice President has no records ready for approval tonight, so we will go right to communications from the Mayor. Madam Clerk.
Appointments. A measure confirming the Mayor's reappointment of the following individuals to the Office of Emergency Management, Assistant Directors, Richard Galvin, Dan Thibodeau, W D Directors, Tom Piper, and Al Stahl.
And the appointments will be referred to the Clerk of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Madam President. The regular course, I don't, there's no need for interviews. These people have been around for a long time. So, regular course.
Okay, so appointments have been given, regular course. Thank you very much. Move on to orders.
Orders. C-24, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that an appropriation of $117,065 be made to the Fire Department Capital Outlay Expense Account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
And C-24 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Madam President. First time on the calendar. Regular course, please.
C-24 is being given regular course. Thank you very much. Petitions, first time on the agenda.
Four dash 20, election order. An order relative to November 5th, 2019 municipal election.
And four dash 20 is referred to the Clerk of Ways and Means.
Yes, Madam President, regular course.
Thank you. Four dash 20 has been given regular course. Move on to five dash 20.
Five dash 20, National Grid in Verizon, New England, request to install one jointly-owned pole and remove one jointly-owned pole on Hall Street, beginning at a point approximately 265 feet west of the center line of the intersection of West Street, and continuing approximately 15 feet in a north direction.
And five 20 is referred to the Chairwoman of Public Service.
To be regular course.
Five 20 has been given regular course. Thank you very much. Okay, matters before the City Council.
Madam President, if I could, could we bring the appointment up?
Absolutely. Council Frida.
Thank you. A measure confirming the Mayor's appointment of Joanne C. Donfro to Library Board of Trustees, term to expire 4/15/2022. I will go to my member of the Ways and Means Committee, Council Dabrowski.
I'm in favor of this.
Okay. Unanimous decision of the Ways and Means Committee to confirm the appointment of Joanne Donfro.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to appoint Joanne Donfro to Library Trust, Board of Trustees, term to expire April 15th, 2022, and this will be a roll call vote, starting with Council David Cormier.
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Council Thomas Arndinger.
Yay.
Council Badanza.
Yay.
Council Schala Fazepa.
Yay.
Council Dabrowski.
Yay.
Council Frida.
Yay.
And I will be recorded as yay. By a vote of eight to nothing, Joanne Donfro has been appointed to the Library Board of Trustees. Thank you very much, and congratulations.[784.13][784.13](applause) Okay, we will move on to the City of Leamester's financial report. Chair of Finance, have a report for us.
Yes, Madam President. We began the year on July 1st, 2019, with a balance in the stabilization account of 19 million, 19,890,850 dollars. We've had some interest earnings since then of $57,233. And up to date, with all of the pending and past communications from the Mayor, we have spent, or will spend, $2,023,101, leaving a balance of $17,924,982.
Does anybody have any questions on the report? Thank you, Council Badanza. We'll move on to C-19. Is the Chair ready to report?
Yes, Madam President. C-19, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that an appropriation of $64,131 be made to the School Transportation Expense Account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is the remaining balance of the school transportation deficit from fiscal year 2019. The approval of this money will pay out and close out the school transportation account for that fiscal year. Madam President, I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Council David Cormier.
I am, I'm all set with this. I agree.
Council Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Chair, would you like to?
Yes, Madam President. The unanimous recommendation of finances to grant C-19.
You've heard the recommendation of Finance Committee to grant C-19. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please, all those in favor, please indicate in the usual manner. Any opposed? By a vote of eight to nothing, C-19 has been granted. Does the Chair have an order?
Yes, Madam President. Order that the sum of $64,131 be appropriated to the School Transportation Expense Account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to move for the adoption of the order. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Any opposed? By a vote of eight to nothing, Communication 19 has been adopted. Move on to Communications 20.
Yes, C-20, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that an appropriation of $60,105 be made to the School Department Expense Account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is relative to a unpaid bill that had required for authorization, a special act of the legislature. This is the Royal Steam Heater Bill, many of you may remember. Apparently, the legislature has, in fact, given us authority to spend this money, and the Mayor has sent the appropriation down for our approval. It'd be my position to grant C-20. Madam President, I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you. Council David Cormier.
I, I also agree with this.
Council Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Madam President, unanimous recommendation of finances to grant C-20.
Thank you. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to approve C-20. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed? By a vote of eight to nothing, C-20 has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Madam President. Order that the sum of $60,105 be appropriated to the School Department Expense Account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to move for the adoption of the order. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed? By a vote of eight to nothing, C-20 has been adopted. Move on to C-21.
C-21, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that an appropriation of $30,000 be made to the School Department Expense Account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is for the purchase of a water pump to benefit, Mayor's communication says Sammerset School, but I believe this is actually for Skyview. If you look at the quote that came with the communication, the company Viola actually quotes, "for a pump relative to Skyview, laboring materials to removal or replacement of existing booster system with proposed duplex booster system." This is necessary to keep the, the equipment in the proper order. It might, be my position to grant C-21. Madam President, I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you. I'll go to Council David Cormier.
I agree with this.
Council Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Madam Chair, Madam President, rather, the recommendation, unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant C-21.
Thank you. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-21. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate in the usual manner. Any opposed? By a vote of eight to nothing, C-21 has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Madam President. Order that the sum of $30,000 be appropriated to the School Department Expense Account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to move for the adoption of the order. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Any opposed? By a vote of eight to nothing, C-21 has been adopted. Move on to C-22.
Thank you, Madam President. C-22, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that an appropriation of $230,700 be made to the Sidewalk Expense Account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is a proposal by the Mayor to create or improve a number of sidewalks that relate to school properties. There is a construction cost estimate attached to the communication, which break down, breaks down the length of the cement or concrete sidewalk that is to be constructed. They relate to sidewalks in or around Leamester High School in CTEI, Skyview Middle School, Sammerset Middle School, Francis Drake Elementary School, Bennett School, Northwest Elementary School, and Johnny Appleseed School. All of this, of course, is in the vein of public safety for schoolchildren using or walking to those particular schools. It'd be my position, Madam President, to grant C-22, and I would ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, and I will go to Council Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
And Council David Cormier.
I also agree.
Madam President, unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant C-22.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-22. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate in the usual manner. Any opposed? By a vote of eight to nothing, C-22 has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Madam President. Order that the sum of $230,700 be appropriated to the Sidewalk Expense Account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to adopt the order. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Any opposed? By a vote of eight to nothing, C-22 has been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll move on to Legal Affairs. C-10, does the Chairman, is the Chairman ready to report?
I am, Madam President. Communication 10, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that the Cross Connection Control Ordinance, Chapter 17, Section 1718, be updated per the attached document. The adoption of this updated ordinance will help with the safety preservation of the water quality within the City of Leamester Water Distribution System, which is a continuous goal of the Department of Public Works. We had one referral that was outstanding, that we did receive, from the Health Department. It's dated September 6th, 2019. Dear Council Members, the Leamester Health Department supports this ordinance as it will enhance the annual inspections, surveys that are already being performed. Preventing contaminants from entering the public drinking water supply system is essential to providing potable water to our residents. If anyone has any questions about our opinion on this ordinance, please feel free to contact our office. Sincerely, Christopher J. Canuth, the Director. It is my recommendation that we grant Communication 10, and also that we schedule a public hearing on the reading of the ordinance for September 23rd, 2019, at 6:40 PM. I would just ask you to poll my committee.
Council Badanza.
My position is to, is to approve.
Council Frida.
I agree, Madam Chair.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation to approve C-10. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Council David Cormier.
Yeah, I just, I just do have a quick question. This particular chapter and section is, you know, original, back to like 1960, when our ordinances went into effect. It's never been updated, and I'm just kind of curious if anybody has any knowledge of, as to why, if there's been any particular issues regarding any of this, or if state law has changed. I'm just kind of curious why, why all of a sudden we are changing or updating this section of the ordinance.
I believe the state law did change, so we're required to update our ordinance so that we conform with the law.
Okay.
I don't know the particulars of the changes, but I can certainly get back to you with it.
Okay, yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I'll get back to you next meeting.
I'm sure, I'm sure there's a reason, you know, that, I'm sure they didn't just arbitrarily pick something to petition and update, and I'm just kind of curious as to, as to why, that's all.
Yeah, I can get back to you with the specifics.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? So we still have a unanimous recommendation to approve C-10, and also to schedule a public hearing on September 23rd at 6:40 PM. All those in favor, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed? All right, by a vote of eight to nothing, C-10 has been approved. We'll move on to Public Service. Two 20, is the Chairwoman ready to report?
Two 20, National Grid in Verizon, New England, to install two jointly-owned poles on Woollett Street at a point approximately 50 feet southwest of the center line of the intersection of Woollett Street and New Lancaster Road, and continuing approximately 150 feet in a southwest direction. National Grid to install two new poles for reliability and solar farm. The recommendation, I'll go to other members of my committee, but my recommendation would be to grant.
Council Arndinger.
I agree.
Council Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Could you qualify the recommendation, please?
A unanimous decision, recommendation of the Public Service Committee to approve two dash 20.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation to approve C-2, two dash 20. Any comments or questions on the floor? Seeing none, we'll bring this to a vote.
If I may, Madam President.
Yes.
I do, this is partially owned by my employer, so I am required to abstain. Thank you.
So noted, Dave, Council David Cormier is abstaining from this vote. Okay, so all those in favor, please indicate in the usual manner. Any opposed? By a vote of seven to nothing, two 20 has been granted. Move on to C, three 20.
Three 20, National Grid to construct a line of underground electric conduits, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures under and across the public way or ways herein, here and after named, Portland Street, Leamester Mass. I'm going to members of my committee, but my recommendation would be to grant.
Council Arndinger.
I agree.
Council Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Okay, the unanimous recommendation of the Public Service Committee is to grant three 20.
Thank you. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Public Service Committee to grant three 20. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Hearing none, we'll bring this to a vote. All those in, oh, we'll ask, Council, you're all set for this?
Yeah, this is just National Grid, it doesn't include Verizon. Thank you.
All those in favor of granting three dash 20, please indicate in the usual manner. Any opposed? By a vote of eight to nothing, three dash 20 has been granted. Move on to Ways and Means. Clerk of Ways and Means ready to report?
Ways and Means, we already did Joanne Donfro's confirmation. We'll go on to C-17, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that Diana Richard be exempt from the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 20B, conflict of interest. Diana Richard is, works in the Mayor's Office, as we know, and she is looking to be the scribe for the Conservation Commission, I believe. So we need to declare her ability to do that. So my recommendation would be to grant or to approve. Go to members of my committee?
Council Dabrowski.
I agree.
Okay, will you qualify the recommendation?
Okay, yep, the unanimous recommendation would be to approve C-17.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to approve Communication 17. Do we have any comments or questions on the floor? We'll bring this to a vote. All those in favor, please indicate in the usual manner. Any opposed? By a vote of eight to nothing, C-17 has been granted. Move on to C-18. Madam Clerk?
C-18, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that Cheryl Caneado be exempt from the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 20B, conflict of interest. Cheryl, I know has been helping out on the solar program for quite some time. Now she has an opportunity to, to be administrative, so the recommendation would be to grant C-18. Confirm grant?
Okay, Council Dabrowski.
I agree.
You qualify your recommendation?
The unanimous recommendation of Ways and Means is to grant C-18.
Thank you. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant Communication 18. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? Seeing none, we will go to a vote. All those in favor of granting C-18, please indicate in the usual manner. Any opposed? By a vote of eight, two, zero, C-18 has been granted. So move on to new business. Is there any new business for us tonight? Okay, seeing none, old business. Any old business? Council Schala Fazepa.
Thank you very much. Through the Chair to the City Clerk, at the last meeting, I had asked you to contact the Mayor's Office and get an update on the Leamester High School Athletic Complex. Have we heard anything back? Have we heard anything back? Okay, would you follow up again, please? Thanks.
Thank you. Any old business, additional old business? Okay, seeing none. We do have a tabled position upon which action is proposed, C-29, from fiscal year 19. First, we need to vote to remove C-24 from the table. All those in favor of removing C-24 from the table, please indicate in the usual manner. Okay? And C-24 is now referred to the Chair of Legal Affairs? No? Yes? Okay.
Thank you, Madam President. Communication 24, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, allow Roll On America to connect into the Lemmester Water System through a special act of the legislature. This is a matter that's been on the agenda several times, and I believe we are still waiting for some information from the city solicitor. So I would ask that we give this further time, and hopefully, we can take action on it at the next meeting, and I have been in contact with the representative of the petitioner, and I did indicate to him that is likely what would happen today. So my recommendation would be further time. And I'd ask you to check my committee.
Counselor Frida.
I can agree with further time, but we voted on this years ago, and we have gotten recommendations from Attorney Riley on the difference between an intermunicipal agreement and a special act of the legislature to ensure our ability to go after the funding if they stop paying it. I would have no problem voting on it tonight, but if you really want to do further time, I mean, I don't think he's going to say anything different than what he's saying, what he's said a number of times already, no. But if you want further time, I'll support that.
Yeah, I mean, only, only, that's the discussions I've had with the petitioner, and, I mean, we are, we are waiting for the precise information. I think the petitioner probably would like to know that information as well.
Counselor Danza.
We received an opinion from Brian Riley, our city solicitor's office, on this particular petition, C-24, by email on November 26, 2018, and he, he was sort of suggesting that the IMA was a better way to go for the public intermunicipal agreement between us and the proposed user. We also received previously referral information from the DPW Director, who was in favor of it, as well as Roger Brooks. More recently, Roger Brooks sent a specific email to us that indicated he was in favor of going with an intermunicipal agreement. He thought this was a relatively small volume water user. He had no problems with it. What I do know from the petition now coming off the table is the petition specifically seeks relief via a special act of the legislature. So in my mind, this petition would have to be amended, and I'm not so sure we can do that really without the petitioner requesting it or being here to at least assent to it. So I would be in a position, I think, to go forward tonight if, in fact, this petition sought an intermunicipal agreement, but where it technically doesn't, I think we need to grant further time and, you know, communicate to the petitioner that they may want to amend their petition, and then I think we can take it up the next time.
Counselor Dubrowski.
I think that's precisely what's going on with the city solicitor. That's the information we're, we're waiting for.
Great.
You want an update? Clerk has an update on this.
I've been talking to the Roll On party and also the city solicitor's office for it, and the Roll On felt like they wanted to wait and give it further time tonight until they got a definite answer about a legal management corporation name change for their IMA, because they are working on an IMA, and they would like to come in at the next meeting and present everything they've done to get to the point they're supposed to, that you guys recommended before, but they just want to have everything tied up nicely in a knot. So that's why they asked for that particular step.
Okay.
Counselor Frida.
To the clerk, through you. They, is the clerk, the city solicitor still recommending an IMA or a special act of the legislature?
Last time I talked to Brian, an IMA would be sufficient.
This is a chair that's contradictory to the last con, last dominion we had from him in November. I will support further time because I think there's some language issues here. I think, though, that it's important for the public to know that the water we supply to Lancaster to the Roll On America would be a different rate than our rate payers pay, and there were a lot of different provisions on it. It's not just letting them have water. There's a lot of, Roger Brooks has done a lot of work on this to be sure that we're in a good position. So I think that's important for the public to know.
Counselor Danza, did I see you?
I was just going to say, I think that some of the direction regarding going IMA instead of special act really came from Roger's recommendation, Roger Brooks's recommendation. So I think that's really what was driving that.
Any other comment?
Through the chair, years ago, we've had a number of IMAs with Lunenburg, with Lancaster, and there was always confusion about whether the mayor had the authority to do it or whether the city council had to, to approve, and I don't know that that's ever been established since then, but I know we've got some of, eat both, either or. So I think it, it really needs to be clarified as to whether we do have to confirm it or if the mayor has the authority to do it himself. I think that makes a big difference here.
Counselor Shalhoub Zephyr.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm reading Brian Riley's opinion, and in my reading of this, he's recommending that the agreement is a special act in order so that we can, you know, clearly identify the roles and responsibilities and guarantee payment in case they defaulted on payment or something. And I'll quote from this, it says, "In order to provide protection and collection options for the city with regard to a Roll On America water service, in my opinion, the city should seek a special act that authorizes a lien and clarifies the rights and responsibilities of the parties and how billing will be handled." So if he's changed his mind and thinks an intermunicipal agreement is a better option, I'd like him to explain that, how it differs from what he told us previously.
I'll have him reconfirm it in an email when he responds to me. Yeah.
Anybody else? Counselor Dubrowski, would you like to qualify the?
Recommendations further time.
After all that? Thank you. So we have a unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means, I mean, the Legal Affairs Committee, for further time on C-24. Any discussion, any further questions? So all those in favor of further time, please indicate in usual manner. Any opposed? By a vote of eight to nothing, further time has been given to C-24. Thank you. Anything on community calendar? Counselor David Cormier.
Thank you. It's definitely a busy time of the year, and I'm sure I'm going to miss some things, but there's a few things that come to mind that are coming up. I think Friday night, the 13th, is the Food Truck Festival downtown, which is always a great event to try all the different foods that all the, all the food truck vendors supply. Also, on Wednesday, September 18, at 6 o'clock, there's the Friends of Rehab One, which is a group that's been formed to raise money to buy a new rehab vehicle and donate it to the city in honor of former Counselor Wayne Nickel. We'll be holding the kickoff, and so there'll be all kinds of raffles and things like that on that Wednesday night to start to raise money. It's going to be a huge effort, and, but a few people have decided to take it on, and hopefully, one day, we will be able to donate a nice, brand-new vehicle to the city.
Can you repeat that date again?
Wednesday, September 18, at 6 o'clock.
And where is it?
At the Monument Tap on Central Street in Lemmester. I might have left that out, sorry. And there is a web, there is a website, sorry, not a website, a Facebook page, Friends of Rehab One, so if you want to see all the announcements on there, and there'll be some of the items that'll be raffled off will be on there as well. And also, I know Counselor Marchion does not here this evening, and I'm not going to be as, as eloquent or, or certainly as elaborative as he would be about the JA Festival, which is going to be on September 21st.
Or long. Or is long.
Or is long, exactly. We'd be here probably till 8:00. But he did indicate to me today that there's 120 or 140 vendors. It's fully sold out. He's got no more room for any vendors. At least, that's what he told me. It's pretty much to capacity, so it should be a great event, and hopefully, we'll have decent weather on the 21st so that we can hold that event downtown Lemmester. That's all that I have.
That's good. Thank you for your report. Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Just quickly, 9/11, the remembrance for veterans, families, and anybody who basically wants to come, at the Johnny Row Park. On September 11, they do this every year, 5 to 7. It's a great opportunity to come out and say thank you, and, and they always have a great turnout, so.
Yeah, it's wonderful. Anything else to the community calendar? Counselor Frida.
I don't have the, all the information with me, it'll be in a future note, but just to mention on a serious note, Catholic Charities of Northwestern County, through Worcester and some granting, will be developing a home for women in recovery. That will be on Mechanic Street in the old convent. Catholic Charities on the bottom floor. Second floor is going, is being redone, so there'll be a grand opening of that, and it's sorely needed in this, this area. There is nothing for, for women locally in recovery. And when I served on the State Committee for Drug Abuse and Opioid Crisis, you know, it was, the only alternatives for women were to go to Bridgewater State Hospital, and it was horrible. That's changed, the governor changed that, but this is something that's sorely needed for Western County, so I'll have more details on that. I serve on the board. I'll have more details on that as well.
Good, thank you. Anything else to the community calendar? Okay, if not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.